Best interest of the kids and the best interest of the district. And I've had talks with superintendent. And I really do feel that I can do this job to the best of my ability and to make sure that every penny is spent the way it's supposed to be. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And for our final concluding statement, Richard Walters.
Again, I'm Rich Walters. I'm running for reelection. As you know, I've had three years' experience. When I first came upon the board, I was only concerned about taxes. But in my three years interim, I have learned a lot as to be a proper board member. And if you reelect me, you're going to get an experienced board member. My concern is taxes. If you all, you people out there, I bet you all got a decrease in your taxes this year when you opened up your bill. And I think that we are partly responsible for that and also with the caps that are imposed from Madison. Remember now, I'm number eight on the ballot. And when you go to the ballot box and you look down there, I'm all by my lonesome down there, and just put that big X by me, and I will continue to do my good work for you and will maintain a citizens' board.
Thank you very much. We'll be back with the four other candidates for the primary election for the school board after a few words from our patriotic sponsors.
All the lines, the body.
Fantastic.
Hot.
Run it again, Randy.
Please do.
You think a car like that would get me girls?
At Roger Marv, customer service is our number one priority.
Here you go. Wish your wife happy birthday for us.
Thank you, sir. Have a good day. Pleasing our customers is very important to us.
I really enjoy my job, and I think the customers enjoy coming in, too.
Bill Johnson is running for a seat on the Kenosha Unified School Board. As a businessman and taxpayer, Bill Johnson is aware of the importance of quality education. He believes Kenosha has a good educational system, but there is much more we need to do for students to prepare them for the future. He believes we must continue to review what students are being taught and the academics necessary for the 21st century must be implemented. Vote for professionalism and accountability on February 18th. Vote Johnston for school board.
From the home office at Kenosha, Wisconsin, here are the top five reasons to buy a pre-driven vehicle from Chuck's Southport Auto. Number five: variety and selection. Number four: competitive prices. Number three: the friendly, helpful sales staff. Number two: hassle-free financing.
Hi, I'm David. I've helped hundreds of people get car loans. I'd like to help you.
And the number one reason.
Hi, I'm Chuck Lemay, and I'm inviting you to visit Chuck's Southport Auto Center.
Since 1946, Max Deli has been an important part of our community.
Ah, well, it makes us so special is Janette Rowland.
You didn't look at them as bosses, just as bosses, but almost part of a family.
Mr. McCarron was definitely a father image.
This is somewhere where we try to teach them how to respect other people, how to serve other people, and how to help their community.
They haven't changed. They still have that warmth when you go in there.
Oh, is she beautiful.
All the lines, the body.
Fantastic.
Hot.
Run it again, Randy.
Please do.
At Feld Body Shop, we believe the last thing you need when your car's been damaged is another hassle. Feld starts each job with a careful assessment of the damage to be repaired. Our skilled craftsmen install only quality replacement parts using the latest in laser technology. Paint is computer-matched to the original factory color and baked on in our state-of-the-art, dust-free painting booth. At Feld's Body Shop, attention to detail makes the difference. Over 30 years' experience has taught us that there is no shortcut to quality.
Welcome back to Campaign 97. And now joining me are some more candidates for the school board primary election. Joining me now is Don Rugi, James Twomey, William Johnson, and Joanne Riley. Through the luck of the draw, James Twomey, you have the first two-minute opening statement.
Let me introduce myself. I'm James Twomey. I'm 34 years old. I've been married for 12 years to my high school sweetheart. We have three kids in Kenosha schools. I'm a businessman. We're celebrating our 15th anniversary this year. We have three to six employees, depending on what time of the year it is. I also work as an adjunct professor at UWM's Graduate School of Library and Information Science. I've been teaching there for 10 years. My educational background, I hold a master's degree in public administration and a bachelor's degree in organizational psychology. My civic experience before serving on the board, I was on the board of directors of Kenosha Rotary Club West, chairman of the board of the Masonic Temple on Library Square, secretary of Kenosha Lodge Number 47, president of the Southport School PTO, founding president of a nonprofit daycare center, and I've had the privilege and honor of serving as both vice president and president of the Board of Education. I'm here, running for a second term, to solve this district's problems. We need to bring to fruition some of the major initiatives that we have started under my leadership. We've toughened our discipline policies. We've ended the devastating policies of social promotion. We've created early intervention tutoring services. We've created alternatives to expelling kids to the streets. We call that the Bridges Program. We've moved ninth graders into the high schools where they belong. We've initiated the construction of a 21st century school for the future. We've implemented the Finance Committee's recommendations and have completely overhauled our budgeting system. With Dr. Johnson's initiatives, we have toughened our science and math requirements. We've toughened our evaluations of teachers. We've developed mini grants to put more resources into the classroom, and we've established accurate graduation rates and goals to reach. My campaign theme this year is "Together, We're Making a Difference," and with your help, I can continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Second is Don Rugi.
Thank you, Ed. Hi, my name is Don Rugi. I'm 33. I live in summers with my wife and three kids. I work as a computer consultant, and for the past 14 years, I've helped manage the data processing departments of area hospitals and a couple of different places up in Milwaukee. You know, with technology playing a more prominent role in education today, I feel that my experience in this field will be of great value to the school board. In addition, the school board needs members who are concerned about the quality and taxpayer cost of our educational system. In that spirit, the theme of my campaign is "Academic Excellence at a Cost Taxpayers Can Afford." That means that you can count on me to highlight improvements that we need to make to the system, and it means you can also count on me to protect the taxpayers' interests. On that note, I want everyone listening tonight to remember the '80s and early '90s. The board was dominated by the KEA at that time, and the result was a 26% increase in 1992 alone. What do we have to show for that increase now? We have a high school graduation rate of less than 70%. That's appalling. So much for the idea that more money will fix all of our problems. Now, we all know that the referendum last fall was held because of the revenue caps placed on the district by law and that those caps are there to protect us, the taxpayer. I've made a broad pledge to protect the taxpayer. Now let me be specific. If elected, I will do everything that I can to keep the KEA contract out of the arbitration process. You see, last spring, arbitration was used in Madison, and it busted their budget. We cannot afford to let that happen here. I'm asking the other candidates in this race to join me in this pledge as a service to you, the voter. That way, you can tell who's going to be standing up to protect your interests. Thank you.
Joanne Riley?
Hi, my name is Joanne Riley, and my husband and I moved to Kenosha in 1990. And in essence, we moved to Kenosha because of the school district. I have been an active partner in my children's education. I'm a registered nurse who, at this moment, I'm staying home as a full-time mom. Since taking an interest in the school board, I have been attending the meetings and following the decision-making process. From that point, when I decided to run for the school board, I began to visit the schools in the district. All of this has given me a better understanding of the problems and the good things that are going on within the district. Core to my belief about education is the relationship between the teacher and the child and the student. If the child comes to school fed, nurtured, loved, they're ready to learn. If the teacher comes to school feeling valued and respected, they're ready to teach. And basically, what I would look at in all issues is that relationship. I think anything to enhance that relationship is going to up the quality of our schools, and anything that interferes with that relationship will interfere and be a detriment to the quality of our schools. So I guess that you could say that my primary interest as a candidate for the school board is to the children of this district. I see the issues before us, and there are many, but all of them need to be served with the interest of the children in mind. So with your support, that's what I will do, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Johnson, your statement.
Good evening. I'm Bill Johnston. My wife, Denise, and I have two wonderful children, Amanda, age nine, and Allison, age six. I have an undergraduate degree in management from the University of Houston, as well as a master's of business administration from Baylor University in finance and information systems. As a parent, I fully understand the concerns of parents and grandparents in our community. They are concerned about the safety of our children, the way they're being taught, and the physical setting in which they're being taught in. Every school in Kenosha should provide the basic skills our students need so they can be a successful member of our community to either enter the workforce or go on to higher education. The role of the school board should be an accountable, cost-effective educational system for every student. It also should be a competent and trustworthy body furthering the needs of the district. I am director of benefits for Kenosha Hospital and Medical Center. As an organization, we are committed to several values. Those values are integrity, respect, quality, commitment, and accountability. I believe a school board that emphasizes these values will enjoy the support and the trust of the taxpayers and the consumers of the district who also hold these values to be important. I'm excited about the opportunity to be here with these other candidates this evening so we can engage in discussion on the school district.
Thank you very much. Well, I believe that each of the candidates has given something about what is important to them. One of the subjects that came up was teachers, and we've gotten a lot of questions about that. Specifically, the fact that there is a contract coming up for renewal. And Mr. Rugi, you had mentioned that you would not go to arbitration. Do any of you feel differently about that? Mr. Twomey?
I will keep the teacher's salary increase within the range of minimum to maximum qualified economic offer, the maximum being 3.8. I think that there's ways to creatively compensate our teachers that benefit students and teachers. Lowering class size is one. There's also ways that we can increase the revenue in the district that benefits children. Number one is reaching out to homeschooling parents. The other one is to reach out to dropouts and recruit them back into our system. Additional state revenues come with both of those alternatives. I think it's time for a night school. A night school back in this town will help recruit our dropouts back in.
Dr. Johnson, do you feel the same way about teachers? Would you... What are you looking for in renegotiation of the contract?
I think the Board of Education has an obligation to bargain in good faith. We need to open, have open and good dialogue with the teachers. We need to listen to the teachers. We need to understand what their concerns are. Then, at that point, we need to stop and look and see what the district can afford. We have to also remember that we're all out here for one purpose, and that is for the interest of the students, to progress their education so they can be the fullest that they can be.
Joanne Riley, should you be elected to the school board, and you are confronting a contract renegotiation, what is it that... Where do you think your emphasis will be?
I think that my emphasis will be on the teachers' right to collective bargaining. I don't want to see this district thrown into the turmoil that it was thrown into last spring. I feel that if we sit down together and handle this together, that teachers are reasonable people, too. And spending caps have made a whole new arena here for budgets and budget processes. And I feel that it's a matter of looking at what the budget can hold and what we can do in terms of that process. So I would say that the most important thing that the teachers were looking for last spring was respect and value for themselves as professionals, and I would certainly be a trumpeter of that as a school board member.
Okay. Another question came in. It said, "What will you do to address the problem schools face, the problems that schools face with declining funding as they also try to meet the challenge of growing enrollments, children with special needs, and new technologies?" Now, perhaps you could correct me if I'm wrong here. Aren't there different mandates that have been handed down to deal with children that face different disabilities, that they be included in or put more into the mainstream? Anybody want to take a line?
Mr. Black, you're right, there are mandates, but they work off of what is just and decent that we should do for kids with special needs. In the old days, we would segregate children with exceptional needs into buildings and facilities and give them services that were not equal or on par with regular educational services. We've changed that, but sometimes we go a little bit too far. That is, we do want to integrate and include children with special needs in the regular classroom to the extent that it's appropriate for the regular ed kids and beneficial to the special needs kids. This district has grappled with poor implementation of inclusion. I led the charge to change that, and together, I think, the board and the administration has come a long way to improve the inclusive educational services here.
Thank you. Right now, we need to have a little space for some of our sponsors to have a few words with you, and we'll be back with the candidates after these messages.
From the home office at Kenosha, Wisconsin, here are the top five reasons to buy a pre-driven vehicle from Chuck's Southport Auto. Number five: variety and selection. Number four: competitive prices. Number three: the friendly, helpful sales staff. Number two: hassle-free financing.
Hi, I'm David. I've helped hundreds of people get car loans. I'd like to help you.
And the number one reason.
Hi, I'm Chuck Lemay, and I'm inviting you to visit Chuck's Southport Auto Center.
Bill Johnson is running for a seat on the Kenosha Unified School Board. As a businessman and taxpayer, Bill Johnson is aware of the importance of quality education. He believes Kenosha has a good educational system, but there is much more we need to do for students to prepare them for the future. He believes we must continue to review what students are being taught and the academics necessary for the 21st century must be implemented. Vote for professionalism and accountability on February 18th. Vote Johnston for school board.
Welcome back. We've been talking about mandates that require a reasonable amount of inclusion into the classrooms. James Twomey just gave his evaluation of it, and I'll bounce the same question off of you, Joanne Riley. Tell me what you think of these programs and whether they're funded enough?
Well, I think that the concept behind inclusion is definitely a good concept. I think that the current problem that our district is having is the interpretation of the federal law involving inclusion. There is a tendency in some classrooms, I think, to go overboard, and then there's a problem because this is a very sensitive issue to parents. Nobody wants to be the one to say, you know, for example, that if a child is severely handicapped, to the point that perhaps physical therapy might be the best form of help for that child. Nobody wants to be the parent to say, "This isn't working. What about my child's education?" So this is a very delicate issue right now in the district, and I think that it's an ongoing one that the district will have to wrestle with.
Mr. Rugi, how do you see this issue?
Well, I've got a little bit of history here with this issue. Where I grew up, we had inclusion when I was in school, and I think it was a good thing. I got to learn a lot more about the kids that were not exactly like me, and I think that was good for me, and it was good for them, too, because they got to be part of the regular class. We had Down Syndrome kids, and we also had a girl in a wheelchair. And that let us know at an early age that these kids really are kids just like we were at that point in time. And it not only helps them academically, but it helps them develop socially because, let's face it, if they're going to have to be locked away in some sort of special program, it's going to inhibit their ability to really move into society. And now we see the Americans with Disabilities Act allowing them, now that they're out of school, to move into the mainstream of society as well, and I think it's a good thing, too.
William Johnson, what do you think?
My belief that every student should have this access and opportunity to have a successful education. I also understand some of the circumstances surrounding this, that while I believe all students need to have access and a good education, sometimes we do have to weigh the balance of the student within the classroom. We don't want to push the student too hard to fail. At the same time, we don't want to bring the other students down with an emphasis on the student that has been included. So therefore, I'm in favor of it. We need to work on a better way to balance it out.
Okay. Another question that we have here is, "A teacher's greatest concern is discipline. As board members, what would you do to make the school safer?" John, why don't you take that question first?
Well, I think that discipline has become, in these times, I think it's increasingly a problem. And I go back to what I said about the teacher-student concept, that anything that interferes, that gets between that. One of the things that impacts that is class size. I think that when a teacher has to deal with increasingly large numbers of kids in the class, her/his ability to deal with discipline problems becomes impaired. I also feel that administration and the board needs to back teachers and support them when there's a problem with kids getting out of control. This ties together a lot of issues, too, because, for example, in the elementary grades, a lot of the kids that are in some of the classrooms there have learning disabilities, have problems that lead to discipline behavior problems. And I think that we need to get behind the staffs in the schools and the principals. And I absolutely think that any physical or verbal threats or abuse need to be dealt with swiftly and surely and not be tolerated at all, that we need to, as a community, get behind our schools on this issue.
Don, what do you think? Do you think that this is a problem, and how would you deal with it?
I think it's an issue. I don't know that it's a problem. I think it's a solvable issue, is what I want to say. The best way that I think that you can instill discipline is to set the ground rules, make tough rules, and allow the teachers, really, allow them the flexibility to do what my teachers used to do, and that's send the kids either down to the principal's office or get them out of the classroom altogether. Because folks, learning cannot occur in an atmosphere of chaos, okay? And if we have problem students that are causing disruption in classes, we need to get them out of there and make it understood to them and to their parents, that this cannot be tolerated. The schools are there for learning. They're not there for fooling around.
Okay. The same question to you, James Twomey.
We've taken some concrete steps to change that situation. Listen, when I first got on the Board of Education, we would get the discipline reports of kids we were about to expel, and they would be committing 25 or 35 horrible crimes in our schools before they were finally expelled. We put an end to that. We created zero tolerance policies. First time, and you're in administrative review, first time, you are expelled. But expelling to the streets is wrong because you're just giving them a whole lot more time to get into trouble, perhaps break into your home. So we created the Bridges Program. When we expel kids, we expel them to a strict, tough-love, in-your-face, disciplined school called Hillcrest. They have to earn their way out of Hillcrest into a special Bridges classroom in their building, the school they normally would go to. From there, they can earn their way through good behavior and academic achievement into the mainstream again. It has saved hundreds of kids. The reports we get from parents are just wonderful. Another thing we did, we created more self-contained classrooms for the emotionally disturbed, something very vital. Finally, I have to applaud our principals, who have created what they call honors-level discipline within their buildings.
Okay. Bill Johnson with the last.
Okay. Our teachers are important for the education of our children, so therefore, we need to support our teachers. We need to give them the tools to be able to effectively manage the classroom. One way may be smaller class size. Another is a firm policy that will be upheld by everyone in the district.
Okay. We have come to the time for the one-minute closing statements. And James Twomey, as you had the first opening statement, you have the first closing statement.
Thank you, Ed. My campaign theme this year is "Together, We're Making a Difference." And "we" implies that it's not just one group. It's parents, it's teachers, it's kids, in a system of good education and in a larger context of a community that values and trusts its public educational system to give it the necessary resources. Listen, public education is important. It was invented right here in America. In Wisconsin, Kenosha led the way with creating public schools. The first public schools in Wisconsin 150 years ago were right here in Kenosha. Sadly, we have fallen behind the rest of the state when it comes to the achievement in core academic subject areas. We are below average, below average, below average. We need to change this. We can change this, not by spending more money, but by spending each dollar more wisely, by having evaluation systems built into our programs, keeping the ones that work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don Rugi, you have the second closing statement.
Thank you, Ed. Ladies and gentlemen, a few months ago, in the headlines of the Kenosha News, there was an alarming statistic, something that should have jumped out at everyone. We graduate less than 70% of all of our students. That's an appalling number. You know, Jim said it best at another forum. He said, "We're creating the next generation of barbarians." And while I don't know that it's that bad, folks, we're getting there, and if we don't do something about it soon and make everyone in this system accountable, from the top down to the bottom, we are going to face a situation that I dare not even contemplate. 70% are graduating, only 50% of minorities, and among minority males, it's only 30%. Ladies and gentlemen, we need to concentrate on all areas of our community and build the entire community. That's what public education is all about.
That's what public education is all about.
Thank you very much. Joanne Riley?
I think that we're moving into a new era in education, an era in which parents have taken an active role in their children's education. We're moving into the era of the site-based councils. One of the largest, one of the most significant factors in moving me to run for this board is it's not so much that we've got the problems, and it's not so much about working on the solutions, but how we do that. And I don't believe that we do that by labeling, blaming, or shaming. I think that as a school board, as setting the examples for this community, that labeling teaches children intolerance, that blaming teaches children irresponsibility, and that the only thing children learn from shaming is how to shame others. So with your support, I would like to move forward with a positive attitude towards this district. I think you can catch a whole lot more flies with honey than you can vinegar. Thank you.
Thank you. William Johnson, your closing statement.
I'd like to thank Warner Cable, Kenosha 34, for allowing me to share my perspective on education. As a parent, as a professional in the community, and as a taxpayer, I offer myself as a candidate for the Board of Education. I believe it's important that all individuals take an active role in the education process. A quality education system is critical to the well-being of our children and grandchildren today and into the future. It is also fundamental in our ability to be able to attract and retain business and industry, as well as a diversified tax base. I believe the Board of Education should be an action-oriented, problem-solving, governing body. It is important that we are professional and accountable so we can inspire the confidence of the taxpayers in the district. I am committed to this challenge, and thank you for your support.
You will see these candidates again, the six who survived the primary, as we will have another forum. At this point, we have a couple of words for you, and I'll be back with a closing statement.
Oh, the lines, the body, fantastic. Hush. Run it again, Randy. Please do. You think a car like that would get me, girls? Not a chance.
At Roger &amp; Mar, customer service is our number-one priority.
Here you go. Wish your wife happy birthday for us.
Thank you, sir. Have a good day. Pleasing our customers is very important to us.
I really enjoy my job, and I think the customers enjoy coming in, too.
I wish to thank the candidates for joining us this evening and sharing their opinions. I also want to thank those who called in questions, and you viewers, without whom this series would not exist. It has always been our policy to provide a neutral ground for candidates to present their views and answer questions for a viewing audience. The goal of these forums is to inform you, the voting public, so that on an election day, you can choose candidates based on what you know, not on what you don't. We also hope that an informed electorate is likely to vote, the single most important step by which we, the people, preserve our democracy. This primary election is on February 18th. Vote as if our future depended on it, for it surely does. For Campaign 97, I'm Ed Block. Good night, Kenosha.